I'll go to four o'clock for the FSB.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today is August 24th, and we're here for a school board workshop agenda. The time is 1:02 PM. On our agenda today is a review of our regular meeting agenda for the 25th, scheduled for an hour. Protocol and process review, including onboarding process, scheduled for another hour. A 10-minute break, and then the board and stakeholder communication plan, scheduled for 15 minutes. We will be mindful of one another's time, and we will end promptly at 4:00. Okay. So we'll start with our agenda review, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Atkins. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll go ahead and start with the questions. So the first one comes from the Consent Agenda D, Executive Services Approval to Official Minutes. And the question is, "Please include in superintendent comments the discussion on PPE and water fountains to reflect..." Dr. Atkins and Ms. Desmore has explained these items, how they would be paid for with capital funds, and seek reimbursement from FEMA. So Ms. Thomas is the person who keeps those official minutes, so we'll let her respond.
I have a really hard time hearing him. Dr. Atkins, we're not hearing you real well.
Okay. I will lean forward. So again, this one has to do with the taking of the minutes or the reflecting of the meeting in the minutes, so I'll let Ms. Thomas respond to that question.
I don't know if this mic is on.
Yeah, I don't think it's... Ms. Thomas, do you want me to respond to that? Okay. Okay, so Ms. Thomas and I did discuss that, and so that information was presented earlier in briefing, and also is on the video for the record, and will be coming up again in the budget report. So based on our common practice of getting the gist of the meetings for the minutes, and then having the video for exceptional details, we will not be putting that on Ms. Thomas to, you know, do additional work, which is really repetitive.
May I respond to that, please?
Yes. Ms. Atkins?
The reason I put it on, the other, I think there were like three or four items that the superintendent mentioned, and they were all listed there. That was the only one that wasn't of the questions that were answered about reopening, and that's why I just asked for it to be on there. So it wasn't repetitive. It was just one of the items, but that's, that's fine. Whatever you decided.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair. Moving on then to E, Consent Academic Services. That's approval of the CARES certification of Fort Myers Technical College, and also E8 approval for Cape Coral Technical College. It's, the question is Paragraph 2 of the funding agreement. Please discuss how this and other CARES agreements, Section 1804, A, how and what is done with the other 50%? Explain the process for using capital funds. FEMA is this process because of COVID-19 needs and not enough funding from government to cover these needs? Terry Kennedy will respond to that question.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, I just want to interrupt for a second. We are still having difficulty hearing you on this side. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay.
So the first question about the 50%, actually, the first question, please discuss how this CARES agreement, Section 1804. The Section 1804 of the CARES Act allows the recipient, which is the technical colleges, to use up to 50% of the funds received to cover any costs associated with significant changes. And I think there was some confusion there. The 50% is specifically for the college, and the other 50% is for students who apply to receive those funds for tuition. So this is the only, of the only grant, of the CARES Act grants that has the 50%. 50% to students for tuition, 50% for the college.
Okay. That, that...
And then the other part of the question, as far as the FEMA funds are related, we are attempting to apply for any FEMA funds that are related to COVID. So in order to be reimbursed for the FEMA, the district must use district funds, because if you use grant funds, then you will not receive FEMA funds. And so you can't, you can't get something you don't apply for, just like a grant. If you don't apply for it, you don't get it. So what we've done is, we're working collectively or collaboratively to determine what are funds that FEMA is deeming allowable, and we have a new CARES Act grant that just came out last week specifically for PPE. And what we're doing is trying to coordinate and collaborate with the consultant from FEMA. Sarah's in contact with the consultant to then say, "Okay, here's how we want to use these funds." As far as are there more needs than what funds are available, I would say yes, but I don't have a breakdown of that, and I'm not sure if Dr. Desmore is here to provide that.
So, may I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So actually, we decided, we had the COVID need, we looked, we got the CARES Act money, and, but we're looking at, we're going to pay it out of capital, and then see if FEMA will reimburse us.
So the CARES Act funds, each of the allocations have specific requirements for those allocations. And so we chose on, for example, the ESER, which had more flexibility. ESER grant allows for safety, the PPE, as well as mental health, as well as technology, as well as, so we focused on the technology needs that we paid for, such as hotspots. We focused on the mental health and the curriculum and the meeting. The greatest need, or the purpose of that grant, is to identify and make sure that we are working on those students that have the, the most disadvantaged students that have opportunity, or learning gaps. So that's where we focus the funds for that ESER.
Okay. So, and I understand they're very specific, and I want to say, if anyone else was confused with this, Ms. Kennedy spent time with me last week, and I would suggest the rest of you do the same, to talk about this in length and some of the questions. So I just wanted to ask, for example, with the water fountains. And we will purchase, we got CARES Act, CARES Act funding, but it was not enough to cover all of it anyway.
Correct. And I believe in ESER, I don't believe that they allowed any kind of equipment, such as the water fountains, that may be allowable. I believe it's allowable in the new funding, but the new funding is substantially less.
Okay.
And it wouldn't cover, I think, I think it was quoted last board meeting, that was a million and a half.
It was like 7,000 a school or something.
Yeah, so this, so the new grant is 850,000, or somewhere in there, and we have, so it'll probably only be 750, because we have to give allocations for charter and private.
For all of the schools. Okay, so when, when we have a need, then, like, like PPE, we know we have to purchase it, we know we have to have the disinfecting and the cleaning supplies and all of that, but the money is not enough. So the process, then, is to pay for it, and then to turn it into FEMA to get the, the money back if we can. But we don't have the list yet from FEMA, knowing what they will pay for out of COVID?
I believe that Sarah has some of that information, because she's been in consultation with them.
Okay. All right, and thank you so much for meeting with me last week. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the next item that I have a question on is approval of the 2020-2021 term around school supplement services allocation for Eastleigh County High. Is this the last year of funding they receive for two years for coming out of DA status? Candace Alavado, I believe, will be providing a response.
Good afternoon, everyone. So it's a yearly allocation that's looked at, and it's based upon school grades. So while Eastleigh County is in their second year out, because we don't have school grades available from, available from last year, we don't know how it will proceed. However, the plan that's been put in place that we're looking for approval on is for implementation for this school year. What would happen the following school year will be awaiting guidance from DOE on.
Okay. I thought that when they came out of DA status, they did, they were eligible for a two-year grant because they came out, correct?
Yep. So this is the additional allocation, so they received the, they received the money last year, was year one, this year is year two. So you'll notice in the plan that this is year two for them coming out of it. Allocation did not want to roll off the tip of my tongue before.
It's behind the mask.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, the next item is the Consent Agenda G, Human Resources, Approval Personnel Recommendations. It said, "Please explain Cindy McClung's job description change." Cindy McClung's job description actually did not change. What happened was, you've got a change in location, because that department no longer exists at this time, so it switched over to our office, there in the superintendent office. So it was reflecting moving her to that position, or that, that cost center. The next question, it says, "Please update the board on teacher position situation. Are there enough teachers for the changes to leave virtual school?" So I don't believe Dr. Pruitt, oh, she is here, if you'd like to provide him a response. I was going to say that you were busy working on that.
I am. I'm still working on it. Good afternoon, everyone. You know, it's too soon to tell, and I know students are coming back in a week, but we were still through this weekend, working through the number of students who are definitely going to be at Lee Virtual School, and those also with the Lee Home Connect to balance out all of the numbers. And so that's what we're working through right now, because we literally are going through all the hundreds of teachers who have requested either an ADA accommodation or have stated that they are at high risk, or have family members at high risk. And so in an effort to meet the needs of our employees, we're going through those one by one. So as you can imagine, it's, it's a painstaking process. It's taking time, and we just met again this morning for several hours, and I'm confident that we have now assigned most of the teachers that are needed for Lee Virtual. We may have a few one-offs that we're still doing. And now round, the next round is to follow backup with schools and look at their needs, also based on their current DRA file, to see exactly what is needed. So we still may be moving teachers around from one location to another, because the teachers need to go where the students are, and so that's what we're working on.
I had a question and suggestion from one of the teachers, actually, that with the Home Connect, that if a school, for example, didn't have enough teachers to do that, that virtually, a teacher at a different school that did have space in their schedule could possibly take some of the Connects. So in other words, we would be virtually spreading out.
Yeah, we are working on that with some good, with some unique situations, where there may be just a handful of Lee Home Connect, let's say, for an American Sign Language class, that they could join the Lee Virtual, the Lee Home Connect class at another high school. So yes, that is currently, but again, we're still working through that, because we don't know the final numbers yet for everything.
And how, after the weekend, I know that you guys have been working on reducing the Lee Virtual, how are we doing with that now? It was at 10,000, then 11, then, or whatever.
We're down to about 6,000, a little over 6,000.
And are most of them moving into Connect?
That, that's my understanding. I, yeah, I don't, I don't know that for sure, but that's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Pruitt, please don't leave. Ms. Jordan, then Ms. Vaughn, and then Mrs. Patrica, and finally, Ms. Giovinelli. I saw you. Okay.
Dr. Pruitt, can, has, have all the children, has everyone gone through the orientation for virtual? Because I know that there was something, I believe, that Lauren had sent out, that the numbers may change depending upon the orientation, portion of what was required for...
That I can't speak to from the student's side. I don't know if Dr. Spiro has an update on that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. The students that are currently enrolled in Lee Virtual School are those students that have gone through the entire enrollment process. So they've, they've gone through the orientation, they've indicated that this is what they want to do. Mr. Schilling and his team had also provided a virtual orientation option for families. So if they weren't able to zoom in and do it, they also had an opportunity to do it virtually. So yes, though that number that we're talking about, those are students officially assigned to leave virtual school at this time.
Okay, thank you. I was just asking that question, because that would definitely affect what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. What, I know that at the nine weeks, students that are in Home Connect can ask their principals, right? That would be a principal decision. And also, isn't it true that after just a couple weeks, they can ask for a special? Is that true? Have we, I'm curious, what kind of guidance HR and academic services has given the principals on that? My personal opinion is, it needs to be pretty tight, because if you have one school, for instance, where the principal is very liberal at saying, "Sure, come on back," and another, "No, you need to..." I, I think that's going to open up some, some issues. So I'm wondering what kind of guidance...
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. So we, we took the input from the principals, from the brick and mortar principals, we took the input from Mr. Schilling and his team as well. And we are going to allow some flexibility during the first two weeks of the school year for families to transition back to the brick and mortar school, or Lee Home Connect, if he or she chooses to do that for their family. So that'll be from August 31st through September 11th. That's the first two weeks of the school, where when families realize this is what Lee Virtual School is, even though they've gone through the orientation, they've had a chance to ask the questions, we also feel that maybe a lot, maybe don't understand truly that it's a self-paced process, where they're checking in with the teachers on a, on a, on a regular basis, and that might not, might not meet the needs of their families. So September 11th will be that date, when we say that's no longer traveling back and forth between the schools. And again, that was with the input from Mr. Schilling and all of the principals as well.
Okay, but I, and I was also actually primarily thinking about Home Connect and people that decide, "No, I want my child to go face-to-face." Same thing, there's that two-week...
Same, same thing. So inside of the school, and working with HR and budget as well, we've all been, we've all been working together in tandem on this. We are going to allow families that flexibility to make that transition from Lee Home Connect to face-to-face, if that works well for their family. And we're trying to truly have every family feel comfortable with the decision that they're making for their child, because it's important that everyone feels like this is the best decision for their family.
Just to follow up on that point, one of the, one of the pieces of guidance that we've received from the Department of Education, and kind of, it's kind of the lessons learned from other districts that have opened before us, is that after that first day or so of school, you, you have more students that want to migrate back to the brick and mortar. So this plan, I think, does allow that to happen, as people really start to understand the nuances of every one of the instructional models provided.
Okay, yeah, and I totally understand that, and bless you all, because that's going to be another complexity. One more question that came to mind, as I was asking those, if you'll indulge me. What about the students? How soon will we, I don't want to use the word crackdown on students, who, and I'm thinking especially of high school students who have to log in by seven, at 7:00? Those that are perpetually not making it to their first-hour classes? Will we make a decision for them and say, "Now you're back to brick and mortar"? How, how do we plan on, on dealing with that? Because I, you know, when you're at home, in your bed, and it's, I, I can see that as a huge issue.
It is. And so that'll be, that'll be a challenge, and part of the work of our teacher task force that we had for Lee Home Connect was truly to tackle that very specific issue. So during the first week of school, we are going to be involving your administration, your school counselors, your social workers, get those individuals involved right during that first week for students who just aren't logging on, so we can get ahold of the parents and help them understand that this is, this is different. This is not your, the same distance learning that we did at the end of last school year, but rather, this is live, you're logging in, and if this isn't going to work for your child, because they'll become deficient very quickly in credit and GPA in high school, then we need to look at transitioning you maybe back to face-to-face, where it's a different type of motivation, because you have to get there on time.
I know, I, I read the booklet, and I don't remember if that's in there or not in there on the Home Connect, but...
No, the parent, there's a parent expectation part in there.
Yeah, I read through it, but I don't remember all the, okay. That's, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While you're transitioning, just to give you an update on the numbers that Dr. Spiro provided this morning, we have 35,678 in, in Lee Home Connect. Face-to-face is 41,730. Homeschool is 2,770, and Lee Virtual, as Dr. Pruitt indicated, a little over 6,000, it's 6,509 students. 8:30 this morning.
Send that to us, please.
Okay. Mrs. Patrica?
I don't, I don't have a comment, I'm sorry, a question as much as I do a comment. Dr. Pruitt, I, I don't envy you, but I do genuinely appreciate you. I, I don't know how you're doing what you're doing. It was described in several meetings as you putting a puzzle together, and it seems like every time you put a part of the puzzle together, they take it away and cut the pieces again, and then you have to put it back together again, and it's, it's like you're on, you're on a hamster wheel. You're just running, and you're not getting anywhere, but you will get there. And, and I beg the patience, not just of my colleagues on the board, but of parents and teachers as well, because you will get there.
Yeah.
It just takes time. And I keep saying, we would rather be deliberative than quick. We want to get it right, as opposed to just getting it out there. I took my two boys to high school today to pick up their Chromebooks, and their first question was, "What's my schedule?" And I was like, "Guys, you should ask me that, because I wouldn't have let you ask that question in the office, because I know why. They don't have a schedule yet." And, you know, I'm helping them to be patient, but just please know that you have my support and my deep appreciation, because this is not easy, and I think you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It definitely, you know, we, I knew it was going to happen, but I didn't know to what extent. We had a lot of teachers who, you know, said they were at high risk and needed to be at Lee Virtual. Then they showed up at school, saw all their friends, and, you know, were around their principal, and then all of a sudden decided that, well, maybe it's not so bad, and they don't want to be at Lee Virtual. So we've been dealing with that as well, so, but thank you for that. It's a, and I really do, and I'm sincere when I say, we're trying to find the balance between the needs of the employees and the needs of the schools, and balance it to the best that we can. And I do know, in talking to counterparts across the state, that we are doing more than most districts are doing relative to that. So, but thank you for that.
And that was exactly what I was going to follow up with, is I, too, am talking to my colleagues across the state, and, and we in Lee are so well-positioned because of the work of, of all staff, and, and because of the participation of the community. The community has a lot of questions, but they're asking the questions and getting the answers, which is allowing them to make sort of educated decisions. But as I look across the state, I do believe we are incredibly well-positioned, and it's because of your efforts. So thank you.
Thank you. And you said the key, I appreciate the patience, and I would just say to all the board members, as you're communicating, whether it be with families once the first day of school hits, or employees that just please, patience is the name of the game, so that we can, we can, you know, we'll get to it. It just may not be as quickly as some might like. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Giovinelli?
And there's always a lot of changes that happen even the first couple weeks of school, so I can only imagine that on top of what you're already dealing with, so. But, so I have a question. I'm hearing that some classes are, like, large capacities, 35 students, so they're unable to really social distance, and I'm concerned over that. And then there, on top of that 35 in-class students, there's 35 that they're Home Connect.
So, so here's what I'm going to say to you about that, is that, you know, and, and I get it, teachers can't help themselves. They go into focus, and they see what's there, and then they panic. We haven't even, we don't even know where all the teachers are going to land yet, so what they're seeing in focus, you know, and I'm sure their principals have told them, just don't go by what's in focus, but I get it, because in normal years, you can go in there, and it's pretty accurate this time of year, but that's not the case right now. So I, my response to that would be, let's really wait and see if that's really what happens. Just because it's in focus today doesn't mean, it, it may be that there, you know, have, you know, some teacher openings, and so those students are just in there in a holding pattern until they get another, you just never know. So I would caution that, that that probably isn't going to be the case when school starts.
Recommendations that are coming out of academic services and the executive directors is that you take the Lee Home Connect class-size numbers and move those up, so you have larger class-size numbers, so that you can have your face-to-face numbers down. And then the goal also is to have, you know, that, that email that I sent you last week, in terms of the numbers that a teacher would normally have, that the numbers that they have would be comparable to the numbers that they had last year. It's just your higher class sizes are going to be in your Lee Home Connect option.
And let me just...and their concern is they want to be effective and highly effective and they're scared they're not going to be.
Right.
So I love that mindset, so, you know, they're just trying to stay on task. And I know you are too, but I just want to make, I want them to feel better that, you know, that y'all are still working on it. We're still in progress and it probably will be that way for a long time, I would say because I think things are going to, people are going to jump back out into face-to-face once they see that Home Connect's just not quite what they wanted. So the flexibility is huge, so thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on what Ms. Giovinelli just said, I did speak with Chancellor Oliva about some of the upcoming issues that we have and they are looking at a way to make sure that we get those categoricals back for our students who are going to LE Virtual. But anything beyond that would be a legislative change. So if we're looking at holding students and teachers harmless on tests at the end of the year, that's something we as a board need to work on in terms of our legislative priorities. So that's a discussion that I think we should have soon. The emergency changes are those that are going to allow us to open the school, but anything that's occurring toward the end of the school year is going to require a legislative change. They're not going to make emergency orders on those things. So we really need to start to think about what our priorities are going to be.
I have that on my list for later. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. I'm sorry, really quick. Can you...so we're not sure where the teachers are landing yet because you're still doing all of that, but yet on our agenda, we have where...because what I had noticed that there was like 11 transfers from Edgewood Elementary School. So we have all of those that are taking place that we're looking at. Why are we...are those people for sure going to those places that are on this list?
If it's on there, that means that they're processed. I don't have it in front of me. I'd have to look at it to see, but...
Yeah, it was just a list that showed where, you know, teachers and transfers and retirees, those lists.
Yeah, and remember, it's only as good as what's been processed so far. So you're going to see over the next several board meetings, you're going to see a lot of transfer in, transfer out, you know, retire...like that's when the paperwork kind of catches up with everything.
Okay, so those are the for-sure ones that we're seeing.
Right. If you're voting on them, they're for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens.
Two quick questions. One, which may come later, but what does the academic schedule, and this may be Dr. Spiro, look like for a student that at LE Virtual School? And you can do this later on, but I'm just thinking if they have a certain number of classes and things that they have to take for their grade level in face-to-face school, how does that, you know, translate into LE Virtual? Because LE Virtual in the past has been, you know, course-by-course type of thing. "I need this course and I'll take this here." So have they changed the curriculum or the way they set it up to address that?
So currently, right now, if you walk down to the Cluseahatchee Room, you would see the entire district student services team hand-scheduling every single student enrolling into LE Virtual School to make sure that what they're getting is what they need because we want to make sure that our progression matches their progression. And so when we talk about painstakingly getting it right the first time so we're not having to undo it, that is literally what is happening in every facet of this process. And so Lori Brooks, her team, schools have also allowed some school counselors to come in here and support that work as well. And so it is a team effort to make sure that we get it right for our LE Virtual students.
That is a prolific task. I can't imagine. Thank you so much. And while you're up there, the other thing had to do with, you mentioned that August 31st to September 11th, that parents would be able to switch if they saw that LE Virtual is really not the thing that they thought it was. Will the teachers then...that would mean a lessening of teachers in LE Virtual? Will they be able to go back to their school? Will they hold a spot? Will they have to go to wherever there's an open spot in the district?
All of the above. We are, have some wiggle room relative to the number of teachers and the number of students assigned, thinking that there might be that change during that 10 days. So there is a buffer there, number one, and so that if we have to pull teachers back, we'll be okay with that. What we've negotiated with the unions is if there is a spot at your school, you can go back to that spot at your school. If there isn't because of the budget or they've hired another teacher or someone else is covering it, you will go to somewhere else in the district and then you definitely get to go back to your school the following year.
And the equity in that, I would see, is that basically you chose to go to LE Virtual. So it's kind of like your second choice to be able to...
Right, correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Comments, board members? Okay, thank you.
All right, then I'll move on down to operations. The first question is I-7, approval of the Piggyback Board of County Commissioners, Clay County, forbid various equipment and amenities for parks and playgrounds. The question is, please explain in a little bit more detail for the 243-K day-to-day. So Mr. Flock is here to respond to that question.
Good afternoon, board members. The answer to the question is the day-to-day expenditure will only be used in the event of additional lighting is required due to safety reasons. Also, in this event that a repair is not covered under warranty, the day-to-day expenditure can also be utilized to cover these expenses on a needed basis.
Okay. So it's just as things come up?
Yes, ma'am. You know, a lot of the warranties, we do purchase good warranties with a lot of the Musco lighting. Unfortunately, lightning does not cover under the warranty, so a lot of times we have to pay for that kind of stuff. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Yes, ma'am. And it happens a lot around here.
All right, thank you very much.
And then I think, Mr. Flock, don't go too far. I-12, approval of the expenditure, the bid continuing contract for building officials. Question is, what building projects are affected by this RFQ?
This RFQ is primarily used by construction services for facility planning. However, on the maintenance side, we have used building official services on a limited basis on referendum projects such as roofing and HVAC projects, big stuff that we have to use an engineer or a other services like that that's on that bid.
So like the roofing project and Vanneta, that type of thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I believe that's all the questions that I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jordan has a...
Thank you. Dr. Ekins, I'm sorry, and I fail to send this into you. On, under operations regarding the SROs, Dunbar and Fort Myers High will only have one with the city unless...is that, are they the only two high schools that will only have one?
Again, we're negotiating these contracts with the different municipalities and I know that the city of Fort Myers, you know, they've, we just received their contract back recently and they only are, they only have one person assigned to those two as a part of their contract. And I do see Ken here if you want to add to that. We had had historically one SRO at a high school unless it was one of the larger high schools. This year, the, we did get, sheriff's department did recommend we move forward to for all that are in the county. But, you know, city of Fort Myers is its own municipality and own entity, so...
Right, that's why I was asking because I think CAPE is the same, that I think everybody has two except for those two that I noticed.
That is a correct observation, Ms. Jordan. When you're negotiating with each municipality, obviously they have their own priorities and pressures as well from a funding standpoint since it's a shared cost. And so they did write into the agreement that you have the intent to potentially add more with notice, but currently that is one of the unique discrepancies between the various SRO contracts is the immediate staffing level. So that is, that is a correct observation on your part.
Because I had seen where they, which means the city of Fort Myers, I'm assuming, that will give us a 30-day notice if they decide that we need to.
No, that they could add, that if they had an intent to add, say, they have expressed an intent to have two SROs at the high schools. They just simply did not necessarily have the funding available to them at the current time. So they expressed that intent and wanted to put something in the contract to that effect, but we would have to enter this knowing that that's a discrepancy between the level of service at that municipality. So it's just, it's worth noting that that is a part of the current agreement in front of you today.
All right. Yeah, because I did notice they gave us two for Success Academy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Giovinelli.
Just to clarify though, I mean, our numbers are down, so it kind of works out okay. So based on, so I think, I mean, unless everybody jumps back into face-to-face, we won't have an issue. And then I think at that time, they would probably relook at that and give us the additional SRO if our numbers are that, you know.
Ms. Giovinelli, that's a great point. And that was part of the conversation we had was, we know that where most of our schools are under half-capacity even at this time. However, this, you'll notice in the language, it does not impose that they would in fact bring it up to two. So it's still a good observation, but that is a very good point and true, that we'll be under our current capacity levels for that piece.
Thank you. I did look at that. I just was, I knew that everybody else had two except for those two schools. That was the only thing.
I understand. But, I mean, I think right now, I don't think that's going to be as an issue as other things right now, but, so I think it's...
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, no other comments. We'll move right along in the agenda and we will look at the protocol and process review, including the onboarding process, and we'll welcome Ms. McClung. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Well, it's nice to see everybody in the building again. The first one I've been to. So we are here this afternoon to talk about our protocol review. As you've seen on your backup materials, we do have quite a bit of information to review. So we'll just jump right into it. Many of the items are for discussion and then we will make additional changes as required and bring those back to you for approval. Ms. Thomas has been very kind in offering to take very detailed notes so that I can concentrate on the discussion, but I will be taking notes along the way as well. Excuse me. So we'll start out with the very beginning on page three. And there was a request to just have a discussion around the standards of ethical conduct piece and looking at policy 1.05. 1.28 was also requested, however, that policy is not yet ready for review. That was the whistleblower policy. So I'll open it up for discussion around the ethical conduct piece and specifically the word devotion to excellence.
This isn't 105?
Now, this was on page three. We'll start with the policy itself, actually, part of that is within the policy. But if you look at understanders of ethical contact, I'm sorry, conduct, there was a statement that the school board establishes the principles enumerated in the principal's professional conduct of the education profession in Florida. And then there was a request in that first item where it says, "School board member values the worth and dignity of every person, the pursuit of truth, devotion to excellence." And there was some question around that verbiage.
Right, and I believe that was mine. I was just, devotion just didn't strike me well as far as sounding more of a religious tone.
I believe that that is the wording that was taken specifically from that document, the principal's professional conduct of the education profession in Florida. So if you are asking to change that, that would mean that you would not be accepting that document as is. This is more, I'm sorry, Mrs. Fisher.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not sure exactly where you are. Page three of what?
Page three of the protocol.
105 or?
Page three of the protocol document.
Down at the bottom, open up the protocol. Thank you.
Sorry. There was some confusion there because we had two items to discuss that, that particular piece, and then there was also a request to discuss 1.05.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm confused too. Well, if it's not, if there's no discussion around it, I mean, I can live with that.
And I think the main point there is that this wasn't wording that was put in place by the board. This was wording that was already in the document that was adopted by the board.
And adopted from?
Principal's professional conduct of the education profession in Florida.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion around that particular piece and the word devotion? Okay, if none, then we'll move on to the discussion of policy 1.05, which is the school board member code of ethics and boardmanship. So open that up for discussion.
Sorry, trying to match the things up real quick.
Would you like me to pull it up as well?
That would help.
Okay.
Okay, we can look at it side by side.
Cindy, was there a particular part of that?
No, the request was just to review it.
Okay, all right.
And I'm sorry, I did not put names besides, so I don't know who specifically requested and if there was a particular question. It was just that they would like to bring it up for review.
A general instead of just one point. Okay, got it.
Yes, ma'am.
And on our points of discussion, we're just going down each one, is that...
Yes, ma'am. We're going right down the list.
Hmm, two or so. Let's see. Okay, all right.
What?
Discussion?
Yeah, right here. It's the very last item in the agenda, this agenda item.
And on the discussion, it's, one point, about the updated whistleblower policy, because I forget if that was mine or not. That mentions, so right now, we're just doing 105 review?
Yes, ma'am. The whistleblower policy is not ready yet. That has not been approved by the board or brought forward for approval.
Okay.
I'm trying. Okay.
One, I don't know if this is the right place to discuss this one, but it talks about preparing for the meeting. I did want to bring up at some point about the receipt of changes to agenda items. And I don't know if this fits in here or not, that if we could discuss having, you know, a time certain for receipt of changes to the agenda. And I know things happen and come up, but it makes it difficult to continually just look to make sure you haven't missed something before you go into a meeting and then there's not time to really review it.
Yes, I believe that actually... Yes, I believe that actually was brought up under the regular action meeting, that that, that was one of the things. And let me go back and talk about the difference between policy and protocol. When, when we look at the policy, if you want to review the policy, if you have questions about specific things of the policy, then we can take this time to do that. But we can't make any changes to policy today. All we can change is protocol. If you want to talk about protocol items, which are not the same as, as policy, but just a general agreement on how you have chosen to agree to bring certain things forward, then we can make those changes. If you want to review policy, and, and you think there are changes you would like to make, that would need to come at a separate time. We can go back to your item about the agreement that's not in policy, that is in protocol, and we can go back to that in just a moment. But is there anything other than, than that, of this policy, that anyone wants to talk about?
I'm good with it. Anybody else?
With the 1.05?
Yeah, the way it's written.
Where are we at?
We're still on the same thing, policy.
We're still in 1.05. Policy, though, right?
This is the policy. There was a, there was a request to just review the policy, and to bring up any questions.
I, I think you should review the policy.
If we, if you want, we can just look at each section very quickly, under the board meeting conduct, which just generally gives some guidelines as to being prepared, attending the meetings, maintaining confidentiality. Any questions around any of those areas?
Well, that's why I was asking if that, you know, if it's, if the policy is saying we have to be prepared, and the, the process or the procedure is that we don't receive something until two hours before a meeting, I think that's a policy that relates to, I mean, a
Procedure.
Procedure that relates to this policy. Am I correct in thinking that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's why I was bringing it up then.
So what, um, under the deadlines for additions to the agenda, there generally, everything needs to be posted at least a week in advance. There, there are dates that are posted, although I know sometimes certain things do come up.
And that's
Mrs. Fisher, did you have a comment around that? We're looking at, and Mrs. Fisher, I thought you were looking at me to make a comment.
No, I was just going to say, so when something comes up last minute, it's usually brought up for good of the order, and then approved when we approve the consent agenda. Miss Vaughn?
I, I think, thinking back, a couple of issues I've had are things are posted, but there's no detail. So, so they've, they've gone with the letter of the law to, to be posted, but there's no detail. And then the detail is what comes sometimes too late to really review adequately. So, I, I don't know if that's how some other board members have, have seen it, but, and that wouldn't come under good of the order, that's already in there.
No, and I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Right.
Not good of the order. Not good of the order, good cause.
Good cause, I'm sorry.
I meant to say good cause as well.
Yes, and that's what I meant to say.
It's not a good cause item, which are those last-minute things that must come in, but things that have already made it to the agenda, but have not been elaborated adequately. And then when they're elaborated, it may just change the whole, the whole item. So I think, from my personal point of view, that's what I've seen.
And are those changes generally brought by board members, or are those changes that are generally brought by presenters?
By, not by
So when you're saying changes are made
Not by board members, no.
Right. So what I'm thinking is that
By administration, staff.
That's not a board protocol, as much as that's a protocol that we need to discuss with staff, and reminding people that when, to try and get things detailed as, as possible before that first posting date.
Yeah, and I, I was just really responding to what was brought up before. I think that's the issue to me, that it's not, sorry, staff, but it, it's, it's those kinds of things that come in, kind of last minute.
Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, just to clarify, you're not talking about the consent agenda? You're talking
Yes.
Yes. When have we ever gotten information on the consent agenda just before a meeting that was information we were not provided?
Last meeting?
I'm talking about elaboration of things, and I can't give you a list right now, but...
I'd just like an example, I, I honestly, because it seems to me like, on the consent agenda, there's all of this detail.
Not always on day one of the posting.
Not on Tuesday night. It'll, it'll, there'll be a couple more changes throughout the, before, prior to the
Yeah, we, we often get the, there's been a change to, I mean, we, we get them all the time. There's been a change to, however that verbiage goes, to the posted agenda, blah, blah, blah. And it's, it's usually additional information that we haven't had.
Oh, I guess, I guess I just don't think it's substantive, so it doesn't register for me.
I, I see it as substantive.
But there was something that came up at the last meeting that was one of those, and I recall, I think it was Ms. Vaughn said that she had not had a chance to look at it. I mean, there are things that, we get the board docs updates.
That wasn't the consent agenda?
No, that wasn't that particular. I can't tell you an example, but I can tell you that there's, I don't think there's been a, a school board action meeting week that's gone by that we haven't had, there's been a change, and it's on the consent, and it's, it's not a good cause, it's on the consent agenda.
We can certainly make that reminder, and, and just remind people that we need to get in advance. I would guess that
Which we, which we do, and I, we'll certainly remind them again. I mean, I know what you all are referring to, there's, you know, it can be a myriad of different things. It could be something like, you know, a contract that, that, you know, Jen caught something, and it needed to be changed, or something like that. It could be, you know, an addition of, or, you know, a correction that was made, and we're notifying you of that, and, and that's something we'll go, I'll certainly go back to, to our, to our chiefs, and, and again emphasize, which I often do, and she does as well. She, she catches a lot of these coming through, but, you know, we, we do definitely strive to try to keep those to a minimum, and, you know, we'll just redouble our efforts, is what I'll tell you.
I know sometimes it's like adding employees at our positions and so forth, like, the list will get larger, and you don't really know who they, you know, added if you didn't catch it the first time, you know?
Right, yeah, I understand.
Well, and recently, things have changed so, so quickly, that it may be that there've been more than usual recently because of the circumstances.
Yeah, and this is the time of year that you, you do see more of them, because they're just, in the summertime, you have these larger agendas anyway, but, but I, I'd definitely, you know, take what you're saying to, you know, do, take note, so.
Yeah, it's just, from my point of view, it's just something to watch, and, and certainly, things like that happen all the time, and we definitely need the updates if something is incorrect. But, like everything else, and, and I'm not even just talking about this period of time, I'm talking going back a while, like everything else, it happens once, and then it happens twice, and then, before you know it, it becomes more commonplace than you would like it to be. So I, I would just say, as a orange, or, yeah, as a yellow flag, or orange flag, whatever.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Okay, the other item that was brought up on page three was about the possibility of training being available from other organizations than FSBA. So is there any discussion around that?
What page is that one on?
That's not in the document itself. That was a question, because the training that has been provided in terms of ethics and other training has been provided by FSBA. And if you, the questions that were submitted, one of the comments was, is there training available by any other organization? Is the board, would the board consider training from any other organization?
Is there, I, I don't know if there's anything else out there, that's part of the, of the question. I know that DOE requires us to do ethics once a year.
Yeah, I, I'm going to ask Ms. Patrica to, since she's on the FSBA board, to maybe address that, but I know that FSBA has been the go-to for boards across here since probably before I was born, so that's a long time.
So, they are looking at changing the way they do, and this is just in the discussion phase, phases, phase right now, how they do master board training, so that completion does not earn you master board status. There'll be varying levels of, you have to actually become a cohesive board in order to be considered a master board. So they're changing that, and I'm not aware of another organization that has the knowledge of education law in the state of Florida, the relationship with the legislature, or the institutional knowledge. And what I mean by that is, there are longstanding school board members in that organization who bring their experience to bear, and help with the training that's given as part of master board. So I, I wouldn't really have any support for moving away from FSBA for master board training. I personally wouldn't support that.
Other comments?
Yeah, it's just a question, is there other, other options? I don't know, do they even exist? I think that was the question, though. Am I wrong?
Florida school board master board training exists only through the FSBA. You might be able to find a generic master board or, or board training, but I think that would be geared more toward nonprofits, and wouldn't necessarily have the, the legal component that our training has, or the Florida school board experience component that our training has.
Well, is there a national, there's a national board, though?
Yes.
So is there, do they have training? I think that's, I don't think, I think it's just, do they have training opportunity? I think that's
Yeah, and I think we get that advertisement, when that there is a conference or something, yeah, you have the opportunity to attend that. But for the state, Florida School Boards Association is the conglomerate, it's the big part, and they are an affiliate of National School Boards Association.
And there are, I know there are some districts that don't participate with FSBA, so how do they get their certifications or whatever? Maybe that's
I'm not aware of that. They don't, a master board training is not required. It's something that a board decides to engage in at the beginning. I think somewhere in our protocols or in our policies, it says that we will determine what our board training priorities are for the upcoming year, and we, as a board, decided that FSBA would be part of that. I think we talked about equity and inclusion. We had that training as well. That was something we, as a board, decided to do. It's not required, master board training is certainly not required. Ethics training is required, and it is given to us through FSBA, and in my estimation, it's far more palatable through FSBA, because they try to make it interesting. You can also get it through FADS, and I believe you can also get it directly through the state, but it's very dry, and very dry.
And, and I understand that, and it, the question wasn't based on trying to not do FSBA, but looking at alternatives, because when you think about a new board member coming in, the way it's written and the way it's stated is, is if you're breaking protocol or procedure not to do master board training. And that's why I just wanted to make sure that we don't have it written, so that it is, you know, thus say if, that we must do it. And then each year, I guess, it would come up, and we would decide whether we, as a board, want to be involved, or individually, or to that extent.
I, I think that's a two-year determination, because I think that master board training takes two years, so after November elections is typically when that conversation takes place with the board, and they determine whether they want to engage in that two-year training.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Jordan?
Well, I was just going to say, I just think it's a great idea, too. You want to be associated with people of like mind, because even with, like, say, the Florida Restaurant and Lodging, we have a Florida State Association that helps the hospitality industry out immensely. We go to them for everything, but we also have a national one as well, which we have the opportunity to, to be a part of that, if you choose to do so. But it's, it's there for us to learn, and I think I have definitely benefited from going to those meetings, and being a part of that, not only just for the classes, but also the people that you've met, you know, that we have the opportunity to meet, and we can make that phone call if we have a question. So I think it's, it is a good thing to be a part of.
And I think what will help, Ms. Patrica was saying that they're looking at changing the determination as to, you know, the whole board or part of the board. I think that will make a difference, and it will make it seem as though everyone must. So, what, what you were just saying
The whole board or part of the board?
You were saying in the beginning that they're looking at master board training, and how it's worded, isn't that what you were saying?
They're looking at master board training to create, like, think of it as like a bronze, silver, and gold. Not every, right now, all you have to do is complete master board training. We are a master board.
Right.
That's a little funny to me, that we are a master board. We maybe would be a bronze master board, but there are other, there are other boards that, that are functioning at an incredibly high level, and, and they actually have earned that gold status. And I, I've made up bronze, silver, and gold. That's a Chris Patrick, I've made that up, but I'm, I'm giving that to you as a way of understanding the conversations that are taking place at FSBA to determine, you know, you, you don't just get master board because a portion of your board sat through all of the necessary hours of training. And that's what, what we did. We, some portion of us sat through all the, all the required hours of training, so we got the certificate. And that's kind of meaningless. So they're trying to make it more meaningful by, and, and that doesn't mean, you know, the whole board doesn't have to attend. That's a board decision
Right.
That's made every two years.
And, and I think we're saying the same thing, just with different verbiage. I, I agree with you. Okay.
Okay, in the interest of time, if there are no more questions about that, I'll, I'll move us on to the next one. We do have a whole lot of items to cover here. Jason was, is going to bring the screen up for us in a few minutes, if that makes it a little bit easier for you to follow along. But in the meantime, if you have your protocol open, under correspondence, which is on page four, there's a question about, is the policy that all mail be forwarded, or is just mail that is addressed to the board that is forwarded? So right now, it says, "All mail, or all email or mail received in the board office is forwarded to each of the seven board members." So I think the question was, is it really everyone, or is it simply, or does that, does that also include anything that might be marked as personal? So right now, I, probably the best person to answer that question is Ms. Thomas. When email comes in, can you tell us the process that you use, the email that comes into the board office?
Well, I was told that, of course, I read the email that comes in, and then we decide who, it depends on, sometimes they'll attach all the board members, sometimes they don't attach all the board members to the email. So I'll look to see who they did not attach, and I would then attach those board members, being that it was majority of the board members that was on that email, also included Dr. Atkins. And then I would respond to the email, to the correspondence.
And with US mail that comes forward, is that, do you open all of that? If it's marked confidential, does that go directly, how does that work?
I was told to open it all, and stamp it, received, put the date on there, sometimes make a copy, especially if it's something that goes to all the board members, and then send them in the email a scanned copy, if it's an invitation or something like that, but if it's a personal email, I mean, if it's a personal mail, I was told to just open them all.
Okay. So board members, you've heard the process as it occurs now? Any discussion around that?
Can we ask the attorney if that is, is that a part of Sunshine Law that must be complied with, or, or is it just a policy?
Sunshine applies to the open meetings with regards to correspondence that's public records, and everything that comes in is a public record. records, and everything that comes in is a public record. Now, if you have something, and it kind of depends on what it is, if it's something that's personal to you, don't forget your medical appointment, that's not public record.
One of the questions that comes up, too, kind of in this same vein, is some of the community will send an email, and I will get it, and it'll say just my name, and I will respond to it, but not knowing, and this may be a data-type thing, not knowing that they did it individually to everyone. So how we handle, is everyone individually answering that person, as opposed to when it comes board office and you answer it, or the chair or someone will say, we will pass this on to the superintendent? But if it comes with just my name on it, I have no way of knowing that each of you will all receive the same thing. So I don't know how we'd handle that. Ms. Vaughn?
Actually, the more I look at this, and I did send in a revision request, or actually a question on it, I think, this is a little vague. It's, because there are things that come in, and they say board office, and typically what happens with those, if it's just a general request, the board secretary will do, you know, we thank you for writing in, it's been forwarded to Dr. Atkins, he will, you know, that, that verbiage goes with it. And then there are the things that come in, and it's obvious to us because it's everybody. But what Ms. Gittens said, that, you know, many times I'll get something that just has my name, and I'm thinking, okay, are they addressing it just to me for a reason? And then I see other people have responded, and that whole scenario gets confusing. And then the other thing is the ones that come to everyone, weren't we at one point saying that one person, that anybody could answer it, but we should always count on the board chair answering for the board? But I don't think we've been doing that.
Well, yes, unless Ms. Thomas does, because it, and it clearly says here that the board chair or the board office manager, who, for all intents and purposes, that is Latonya right now, will respond to it. So, and with the individual ones, if I get an individual one, when I respond, I copy the board because it's the business of the board. So although it may be someone in my district or someone who knows me personally and they reach out, I will include the board members in my response so that everyone is aware of it. And also aware that an answer has gone out in case it has gone individually to someone else, and I'm not aware of that either.
Wow, and that's what I'm saying. I don't think it's, I don't think it's clear, and I'm not sure that we're following this protocol presently.
Yeah, and this, and these recent months, there have been a tremendous amount of emails, and Ms. Thomas has been, and Mrs. Johnson before her have been exceptionally helpful in trying to answer those or forward them to the superintendent's office for attention. And then at one point, there was something that Ms. Patrico was interested in answering, and asked for a chair, I said...
And the chair signed Ms. Patrico to do that, which I don't, you know, I guess that's within your purview, but...
Yes.
Anyway, I think this area needs, needs some work, and it's not clear-cut enough.
If I can make a comment, the protocol used to be that the board chair answered all of those, that if you received an individual one, it went to the board chair, and the board chair would respond and copy everyone. At this meeting last year, there was a request that everyone could respond, and so that's why you're now, that's why it now says that board, individual board members may respond, because people felt like they, if it was sent to them and they wanted to answer it, they shouldn't need to send it to the board chair to be answered. So I see both sides of it, but that certainly has resulted in a lot of duplicate emails.
I really think there's been a lot of confusion surrounding this, because I know when I first came on the board, it was my understanding that the board, anything that went to the list of all seven members and was a generality, was answered by the board chair, and certainly the individuals reserved the right to answer as well, but that it would be taken care of by the board chair or whoever, in this case, she designated. And the ones that went to board office, which is different, it doesn't list that that, the manager or whoever's in charge in the office, if it's a general request, it would be sent to all of us, that it was responded to and sent to Dr. Atkins' office. But I think where we muddy the waters is when we get the individuals, there's a lot here that is not clear, and I think it's a stumbling block to our, to our communication process.
Do you have a suggestion for how you would like to see it worded?
I think we have a couple of other comments. I was just going to ask the question to the chair, if I may, what are your suggested changes, which is exactly what Ms. McClung just said.
Oh, you're asking me?
Yes.
I'm asking to clarify this, and it would be something that we would need to do a draft on. My idea would be if it comes board office, then the office manager sends it on automatically. The chair, neither the chair nor the members would feel obligated to cover that, although we always reserve that right. I would say if it comes, if this is the way it's been, if it's to all seven members, then the board chair answers it, and in the case of, for instance, when we had a spate of hundreds of, or dozens or hundreds, maybe, of letters about graduation, the chair might say to the vice chair, would you please take care of this? I don't think it's, you know, I guess, you know, the chair can do what she wants on these, but I think the duty would then go to the vice chair and not to somebody who raises her hand and says, oh, I want to answer these.
So if I could just respond to that, so I think that the board chair not necessarily can do whatever he or she wants, but I think that we follow the policy and the protocols, and we try to be as efficient as we can, and our office staff has always been very helpful and supportive in that respect. I think that as a board, we are the decision-making body. We are not individually charged with any superpower, so, chair or not. So I think that if a board member volunteers and has expertise in an area, like for instance, graduations, or maybe the reopening of schools, or the masks, or whatever, I mean, I think that we all have the same level of authority, and I particularly appreciated not only Mrs. Johnson and Ms. Thomas, but Ms. Patrico's help with that, because the number of emails coming forward were cumbersome.
Well, if, why do we have a vice chair, then? If it should, to me, it should fall on the vice chair, and I'm going to put out the elephant in the room when it's a election year and somebody volunteers to answer a wealth of, I think, I have a problem with it. And Ms. Patrico asked me, how would I change and what my opinion is, and so that's what it is.
And good, that's why we're having this review today, so that we can make suggestions and if we need to make changes. So I have Ms. Jordan next, then Ms. Gittens, then Mrs. Morgan.
Okay. Well, I know that a lot of people will blind copy us, that's why we get the individual names, but I know if it has my name on it, personally, as many have mentioned already, I always respond. And a lot of the times, I do feel that, especially if they're in my area, I know everything's our area, but if it has something pertaining to, like, certain schools, certain areas, I try to reach out to them as well. However, there's a lot of times when mail will be sent to us, which I really appreciate when Latonya or Ms. Susan had sent us, copied us on certain emails, just to keep us informed of what other things that are going on, because we were not included. There are a couple of us board members that were not on those lists, so if they had not sent that information out to us, we would not have known what was being said. And I think that that's good for us, because we need to be informed, because the fact that when we're having conversations with other people and they're talking about XYZ, we don't know anything about it, because that letter didn't come to us. So that, to me, is very helpful to allow me to do my job and make sure that I'm aware of other concerns that we would not have known unless had they not sent that to us. But I'm willing to write to anybody, so.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
We're really not getting anywhere.
Okay, well, I have, I have two more people who would like to speak. Ms. Gittens? Okay, so the bottom line is, more information is not a bad thing.
Right.
Not enough information is a bad thing. Sunshine Law says that we all need to know, and that it's, it's public record. My main question with this, and I don't care, you know, who does it, and I appreciate Ms. Thomas and Susan and all that answer those myriad of emails and say, we will pass it on to the superintendent, and I understand what you're saying, if it's germane to your area, you definitely want to respond to that person. Sunshine legally, I'm just, my concern is, if I, if someone sends something and just doesn't list all of us, but sends us blind copies or sends us individual, and I receive an email, I don't know if the rest of you have received it. So since it came to me, and this is a question for Ms. Dupree Bruno, then does that mean that I need to make sure that in my response, I copy everyone else? Because otherwise, if it's just sent to me, and I just respond, and I don't let everyone else know, that is not being forthcoming to everyone else. Am I correct or wrong with that?
So that's a, that's a very good question. Some of the emails that I have seen have been addressed to three or four people, and what I have seen in terms of the process is that the response is sent to everybody on the board.
Can you get closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Can you hear me better?
Yes, thank you.
A mask. Some of the emails that have come in are addressed to three or four people, and then when it gets to, the board office will send it, the response to everybody, so everybody's on the same page as to what was sent. There are some emails that individual constituents are sending to one board member at a time, and it's the same information, but they're trying to see who's going to respond. Those are difficult, because we don't know if it was sent to six or five other individuals. With regards to your response, my recommendation is, when you do respond, respond to all seven, and of course, ensure that the rest of the board members don't respond to that email that was sent out. That's where you get the Sunshine violation. But if you have an issue that has been brought up to you by a constituent and you want to respond to it, there's nothing, nothing wrong with you responding to it. The policies do say that the chair is going to respond to different emails that come in. The policies do say, and I was just looking that up on page 14, with regards to the expectations of the chair, number 13, it does specifically say that the chairperson organizes, delegates, and manages the task of the board. So she chooses to delegate it to another board member to respond. It's in her purview to do so. With regards to the vice chair, it also lists that the, the vice chair is responsible to assist the chair in performing her duties and obligations. So if the board wants to have something very specific in terms of how emails are responded to, this is the time to do it and put it in your procedures and your protocols.
And that's what I was getting at, that, you know, we receive to the board office, that's pretty clear-cut, that goes to staff. When it comes with, and I don't know if it's verbalized this way in our protocols, if we need to be that specific, and the second, excuse me, is if it comes to all seven of us, then it becomes the chair and vice chair or designate. And I think we should be a little clearer with that, and even say the chair and the vice chair, you know, work in tandem to do that, because at times when we have so many, a plethora of them, then the chair and the vice chair could work together and divide that up. And then we need to somehow say then, if it comes to us individually, that our response should be shared with the rest of the board to cover Sunshine Law. Is that concise? Great, thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
So we have 25, or 35 minutes left to do this whole agenda. I think we need to agree on what we agree on and what we aren't certain about. We need to postpone to another date, and we need to ask for recommendations from individual board members before we have the conversation, so we have something substantive to respond to. So I'm suggesting we move on and that we arrange to talk about this topic at a later date, and there may be other topics in this agenda that we, in this list, that we want to do the same.
Well, I have, I have a suggestion on the floor. Can we accept it or reject it and put it off till another day? Yeah, I think that we're, I think we're going to put it off so that we can have a more in-depth conversation, because it seems like there, there are a lot of parts to this that we need to agree on. Okay. Can I ask then that we have that recorded? Because if we don't talk about it again, I will say, A, B, C, this is what I suggest, so.
Yes, thank you. And if you would like to put that, that suggestion in writing and send it to me, I'll keep, and any others, if you have specific suggestions around this particular item, if you would put them in writing and send them to me, then we'll have very specific things to talk about.
And actually, I'll just comment right now. It's my plan by the end of business today to send an email to the board asking for any workshop suggestions that have not been honored yet, that we make a list, and I'm going to go over those with Ms. Schaefer as we look at the planning document for board, future board workshops. Some of them have been placed in periods of time when we are, for instance, if it regards budget, we'll do it when we have a budget update, but I plan to do that this evening, so that we have a clear list and that we haven't missed anybody's requests. Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Isn't there already a list? Why can't we just look at the existing list? I thought there was one being kept.
Yes, there is one, but, but I've had numerous comments about the fact that we haven't gotten to that point yet, and I know we have had a lot with the pandemic and the changes in policies and RSM. I mean, we've had a lot on the agenda this year, so hopefully we can make sure that we have not disregarded anyone's requests.
Right, but my, my point is, if there's an ongoing list, can't we see that to refresh? Because honestly, we, I probably forgot, I probably have a few. I mean, it's just been, like you said.
Okay, yeah, sure, and we can do that. I'll write that down right now. Ms. Fisher? Yes. I think I had it on the list to bring that up, because I felt that, I think the suggestion was somewhere on it, on here, that, again, to utilize the vice chair to maintain that list, to make sure that it's, that it's done and that we can see it. And, you know, nothing against that staff that's, that's working on it, but, you know, like Ms. Juvenelli said, sometimes we forget. like Ms. Juvenelli said, sometimes we forget. And I look at the position of the vice chair, and I think we have an opportunity to share what's done on the board, and if, you know, take something off the plate of the chair, that if the vice chair were working with staff or whomever, to make sure we, the seven, have an ongoing list of these are the things that came up.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Okay, so moving along, Ms.
Thank you. The next item was on page six, under social networking, and there was a request to bring, to discuss the topic of phones at the board table. If you look at the, at the current policy, it says, board members will not use personal devices at the board table during regular board meetings. Board members may excuse themselves from board briefings and workshops to use a personal device, i.e. cellphone for personal, non-board business. Comments, discussion?
Ms. Jordan? I didn't put that on there, but I totally agree with that. And I know a lot of people use that to get their information or whatever, but I know that I've never walked out here with my, a phone, because when I'm here, I'm here. And so to see other people distracted by that, that drives me crazy. So I don't know who put this on there, but I, I agree with the policy.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
And, and I do have to add the caveat that sometimes, some people will put their notes on their phone, and they're looking at, like for their board comments or whatever is on their phone. It's a device that they use for keeping track of things. So it's kind of hard to say, no, you can't bring it out, you have to print it off. So that's the opposite end of that.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Patrika?
I don't think we should allow cellphones in schools, never mind at the board table. I mean, and I've never brought that up as a board member, because I don't think I would get traction for that. But you can most certainly transfer your notes via email, so that it's on your computer, so that you have that in advance of the meeting. I believe we're setting an example for students when we sit here. And if we can't focus on the, the, the work of the board, and we're, we're, even if it's just the appearance of distraction by having a cellphone in our hands, I don't think we're setting the right example for students.
Thank you. Ms. Juvenelli?
I'm actually the one that put it on there, because when, when I started, that was the, that was the rule, and I, I stuck to that rule. However, many board members did not, and so then it changed. So I, you know, I just want clarity on it. What, what are we doing? That's, that's, for me, that was the question, is, you know, are we going to have them, or aren't we? Or, you know, because it's a different board, and so, you know, I wanted to hear what others had to say. I'm open to do, you know, some people bring them to the, a workshop and a briefing, but they don't have them at the board meeting. So I mean, where, you know, what's the difference? And is there? That's my question, you know? So I'm, I'm okay with whatever we decide, but as a board.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Morgan?
I agree that we're setting an example, and this is a professional organization having a business meeting, even if, whether it's a briefing, a workshop, or the regular meeting, the public is watching us. I don't think we have any business having cellphones at the table. I agree that anything we need to do, we can have on our screens for easy access. So I, I would not support allowing cellphones in any of the meetings.
Yes, Ms. Juvenelli?
So that, and that leads me to the question, who has to adhere to that? Is it just the seven members? Or is it the superintendent and his staff? Because, you know, our board attorney, she has her attorney, she has her phone at her, you know, and I understand, but I mean, I think we need to, I think you can't just tell, have to do it, and not everyone. And that was my, that's, that was why I always want to be clear. I just, let's get clarity.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, I think the key word here is personal devices, and I think it's an ethics consideration, because I have my work phone right here, and I use it all the time, because to me, it's quicker to go back and have two different screens open, and going back to emails and that sort of thing. It's just quicker than switching it on, on the computer in front of me. So I think, I think it needs to remain there, and with the emphasis, we're talking about personal devices, and that certainly, we have professionals here, and it's ethics, and I'm sure there are instances where Dr. Atkins has an emergency he needs to take care of, or, you know, there, there are things that come up, as long as we are bound by ethics, and we're not receiving texts from fellow board members, vote this way, or from the public, do this, do that, crazy things like that. I, I, you know, I, I would trust the ethics of, of each of us.
But would that be, and I mean, I see you doing your work, and a lot of people do that, but that would be perception, what people perceive that to be. So they have no idea what, anybody up here is talking back and forth, and I know Dr. Atkins gets information, you know, referring to whatever questions we may have at any given time to, to reply to us. And I think that's, to me, that's kind of different, but for us to, especially with the sunshine, I know that if anyone were to say, I need to see your phone, we would have to then give that to them.
I'll give him my phone right now.
So it is, do you know what I'm saying, though? It is perception, though.
No, I understand perception, but it's a personal device, and it's much quicker for me to use my work phone. It's, I have a work phone, I have a personal phone. I don't take personal texts or anything on this, on this phone. And so if the perception is that Vaughn's sitting here playing Candy Crush, I'll say, hey, you know, take a look. Sorry.
Madam Chair, I think I'm hearing two different discussions here. I, I think first, we need to clarify the, the definition of personal device, and whether that means any cellphone or a cellphone that is not a work cellphone, before we go further with it. It was very clear that Ms. Vaughn perceives a work cellphone as, as not a personal device. Is the rest of the board in agreement that that is not a personal device?
That's how I'd see it, it's just.
And, and I would agree with that. I think that in the recent two years, more and more people, like when staff comes up, they've got their information on their cellphone. I have my comments on my cellphone. When Dr. Atkins needs information and staff is aware of it, they can text him. I mean, I think personal device, because this says, social networking and, and social media guidelines. It doesn't say anything about business meeting guidelines. And so I, you know, whether it's a screen, for me personally, it's really difficult. I tried to get, you know, two screens up here to put them in half, and I couldn't before. And, and if we had the opportunity where we could slide it over, like I have two monitors at home, and I can slide it over, and I can, and I've been doing that in the Zoom, and it's really worked well for me. But I, I have a lot of information on my, my business phone, and, and I use it. I mean, and it's not, I'm not social media, I do not use Facebook on it at all or anything like that. It's, it's just information, and calendar access and things like that. I put, you know, I put all that kind of stuff on my phone. My calendar has all that information. So I, you know, I'll certainly agree with the majority about that. I mean, Ms. Patrika has her own personal device here, it's her, it's her personal computer. She has her work on it. So how does that, you know, how does that, how, how do we perceive that? And, and have we had comments from the public that there's a perception that we're playing games on our cellphones? I haven't had, I haven't heard that. Okay, so.
For the, for the sake of time, I think, the way it's written, it says, personal devices. It seems as though we've kind of come to a conclusion as to what personal devices are. And so my recommendation is just to leave it and look at the word personal.
Thank you. Okay.
Is there agreement with that? We'll leave it as it is?
So is my computer a personal device?
What?
Is my computer a personal device?
Mm-hmm.
Is it a personal device? But are you using it for business or personal?
I can't use these computers for business. I don't know how to use a Windows-based system, so.
Okay.
So it sounds like we leave it as is, and then if there is later discussion around the personal device, we can, if someone wants to bring that up at another time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McClung.
Okay, so going to the next, it's discussion around meetings of the school board. So I'm going to come down, that is on page six as well, just a little bit further down. And the first item was a recommendation that the board set goals, outcomes, and evaluations for all meetings. Discussion around that recommendation. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, that came from me. I, I think one of the problems that we have with our meetings is that the expectation of what is going to be accomplished isn't clear from the get-go, and that's where we confuse workshops and briefings and board meetings. I think that, for example, had we started this discussion by saying, the goal is to identify those things in the protocol with, with which all board members agree, and anything with which we have an issue, then let's put that aside for the end of the meeting, and if we can't accomplish it by the end of the meeting, we'll, we'll deal with it at a future date, as opposed to, here we are, it's 2:40, and we aren't even, well, we're just about a third, maybe a quarter to a third of the way. No, that's just on the first page. So we're an eighth of the way through this agenda, because we have no goal, and we have no expected outcome, and therefore, we are having conversations all over the place and not resolving enough that would prevent us from having another meeting of the exact same kind. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. So if I can respond to that, it was my, my understanding that when we sent our suggestions to Ms. McClung, that she would compile them, and then we would have identified the areas that needed discussion and would, might potentially result in a change. So I thought that that was the goal. However, I do think that we have some level of difficulty getting on the topic and staying there and coming to an agreement. I mean, and this is, yeah, part of our issue. So if you have a suggestion that we do this in a more concise way, I, I certainly.
I would say that I would like to start out by saying, the goal of this meeting is, the expectation that board members will, the board will, and, and then the important part, which is the part we've, we've lost, is that we evaluate after the fact in a plus delta way, whether or not what we've done has been an effective use of our time. So you set out the goal, and then you evaluate whether or not it worked. I'm not saying that I know how to do it, I'm just saying that we need something that sort of holds our feet to the ground here, and then a way to evaluate whether or not we've ever talked of doing it.
And, and I agree with you with that. So then should we, because we were all set up, and Ms. McClung has done all this work, should we just go through each area? And then if there is no interest in discussion, that we can just move on a little bit more swiftly, and just identify those areas where we might want to make adjustments in our protocols? Ms. Gittens?
And, and I, I agree with that to an extent, but, you know, skipping over something that someone put on because, that they thought was important is an issue.
No, we're not going to skip over anything, we're going to go through it, but we need to move forward.
No, and I understand we need to move faster. One of the caveats to, to what Ms. Morgan just said, and laying out our goals and everything, is what Ms. Juvenelli was talking about before, and that's that follow-up. And I, I believe, I'll speak for myself, sometimes I feel like I've, I've got to get this out now, because I have no idea when it's going to, the opportunity will come up again, because things drop off of the, the radar, and that's why the importance of having that follow-up list that we can see. Because if we see the list, and there may be something on there, and between the time that we discuss it, and I just say, well, you know what, I got the answer to that, that's not necessary anymore, and we can drop it off. But if we can't see it, and we feel like, oh, it was just forgotten, so.
Right, and, and that'll be in the works this evening. Ms. Schaefer and I will send that out.
So the recommendation that, that's up for discussion right now is, does the board want to establish a process for setting the goals, outcomes, and evaluation for all meetings?
Ms. Vaughn?
And I would, parking lot, it's the same idea.
That's, that would be part of, I'm sorry, the parking lot would be a, a separate process from setting those goals, outcomes, and evaluations, but yes, you see, there are three recommendations there, and I was just looking at the first one. Ms. Vaughn, did you have?
What I was going to say is, to me, the goal is inherent in the agenda, and this is not a comment on anybody, because I'm very guilty of being way too verbose, but that's why we have facilitators and chairs and vice chairs and, and, and all of that. And if, if anything, what we need to do is, we as individuals, people like me, need to cut down the length of what we're saying, and, and on the, you know, we, we need to adhere to the one-time and that sort of thing. But really, is not the goal within each agenda item, to discuss it and to hear from our fellow board members, and because of sunshine, this is really, and the workshops, I want to hear what everybody feels. And, and this is not Ford's assembly line, that, you know, we, we can't, oh, this car's not any good, because it didn't pass muster. I think it's really important to take the time to hear from everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McClung, proceed.
Just, you have one comment. I, I think, I agree with you, I think it is important to hear from each other, but I think too many of us use this table as a platform to, to communicate with the public. And I think, I think the transparent part about a meeting is that the public gets to see the work of the board, but it's our job as individual board members to communicate with our constituents, and not to put things on the record, or to speak to those who might be watching, or any of that, that the, the work, the transparency occurs when we talk to each other and the public sees that. And then it's our job to go out to the public and explain what happened at the board table if they don't understand it. And that's, that's where I think I'm not on the same page with some of my colleagues with regard to the goals of a meeting.
Thank you.
So I'm not hearing a consensus around developing a new process. What we could do is possibly the presenters at the beginning of a presentation, just make it very clear what the goals of that presentation are. And then if we need to come back to that, if that doesn't fulfill the needs, we can come back to it. The second process that was up for recommendation is developing a parking lot for meetings, and I believe I heard, heard the chair say that that actually is being done, that you're looking at developing that list and having someone do a list. This, this may be slightly different in that it wouldn't necessarily be just for workshop topics, but could be for other items as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so do I hear a recommendation that, that someone be appointed during the meetings? Do I have that position, or that job delegated to keep track, like a list of a parking lot for meetings that would be brought back up at the end of the meeting, to just say, here are the things that will be brought forward, and to make sure that they're on the chair's list?
So.
I have brought forward that that should be the vice chair. So I don't know if it was discussed or agreed upon, but.
So if I, if I may just respond to that briefly, right now, I've been keeping a list, and Ms. Schaefer has been putting it on the planning calendar for future agendas, and I- And as I explained, tried to marry the topics, you know, for when there are briefings and other presentations by staff, which makes it simpler and is less time-consuming for staff when they deal with one issue at the same time. So, yeah, and I will send out that memo tonight. We'll get the list. Everyone will have an opportunity to check it, and if there's anything missing, people can say that, so...
All right, thank you.
But there is a format where staff has things on a timeline. For instance, an example is the budget. Like every so many months, Dr. Desmore and her team will give us an update. And so now we're coming up on the final... The approval of the final budget. But there is a timeline, and that is what I think guides a lot of staff's work. And we really don't want to, at this point, I think that we need to comply with that, stay on the agenda. There are times when contracts are renewed. So there is a process that exists and has for a long time, and I don't know how we can take that apart, and especially at this time with all of the additional work that has been created in this trying time. So we'll get that together tonight. Yes, Ms. Gittens?
Okay, and I think you're looking at it in a whole lot more detail than we were, at least from my impression. Basically, this topic was when we as board members are talking about something and we say, "Okay, well, we'll do a workshop on that later," just that simplistically. I understand all the detail that the secretaries and the staff has to do and all... That's not at all what I was speaking of. I was just speaking of if we say something about, you know, pens and it said, "Well, we'll table that," that if someone just had that list, not to do with all of the details of when we do contracts and when we do... Just, Ms. Gittens had mentioned in a workshop about pens, it's on our list. Do you still want that on there?
Right.
Now I got the answer already. I don't want it on there.
Right. And Ms. Schaefer has that list, so you'll get that tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next items were around expectations for board members. And there was some... A request to discuss consent agenda polls. So if someone would like to mention that or would like to talk about that, I can tell you what the language is right now. I believe it's 24... Yes, notify the superintendent at least 24 hours in advance, if possible, of the intent to pull an item from the regular action meeting consent agenda. Provide a memo to other board members of this intent, including the rationale for the poll. Did someone want to change that? Okay, seeing no discussion, I'll leave that one as is.
Thank you.
Okay, we talked already about the deadlines for the addition to agenda items, so I'm going to move past that one. The next one was, please add, if planning to make a motion at a regular action meeting, please provide copies to all board members of the governance team. Discussion around that recommendation.
Don't that contradict what we already have in there?
Yeah, it was my recommendation, and I'd put it in there just because we don't obey the first one. So I figured at the very least, if we're going to disobey the first rule, we ought to have something in writing so that everybody can see exactly what is being proposed.
I don't think we all dis... If I may, may I respond? Thank you.
Yes.
I don't think we all dis... I don't think we all fail to follow that. I think it's gotten a lot better. So I would hesitate to change the rule because I think there's a broad-based understanding that we need time to deliberate as a body, which, you know, typically requires a workshop or a briefing or something, and some recommendations from staff. So I think just a reiteration that we follow that rule. I really genuinely believe this is an area that's gotten a lot better. You're right, we're not following it with fidelity, but we're getting closer than we were before.
I'm fine if we follow the first with fidelity.
Thank you.
Okay, next one was on page seven. And this was under the regular action meeting, a request to add questions to the superintendent, not for a vote, based on current relevant items. And I believe that was under the action meeting.
Yes, that was mine. May I go ahead and...
Please, go ahead.
Okay, I put that in there because it's not consistent. At times, there are board members that will ask something of the superintendent during the proper time of the meeting, during their discussion. And it happens sometimes, and it happens for some, but not for all. And I don't know, you know, how we would put it in here, but just basically understanding that during our board comments, that if we do have a question for the superintendent, that it is allowed to do so, that we are allowed to do so.
Mrs. Gittens, do I understand you would like that added under the board member comment parameters? Is that where you wanted to see that?
Oh, excuse me, if I may interrupt. The judge ruled in favor of the FEA. Shocking, I'm sorry. That just came across my...
It was...
And that certainly is current pertinent.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yes.
Did you just say that the judge ruled in favor of the FEA?
Of FEA.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I'm really sorry. That was really rude, but that shocked me.
No, that's okay. Thank you. All right, so...
Well, you know, as I'm looking at, may address any matter relevant to the operation of the school district. I think we just need to adhere to that and understand that, well, no, that's... I'm sorry, public. Is that in board comment as well?
Specific language is not in under board comment.
I refer to superintendent... The part that says, "For additional guidelines, please refer to superintendent..." Items that need to be shared with the board. Do we need to add that verbiage over on the board member comment side just to have it solidified?
So, Ms. Gittens, are you making the recommendation that the language may address any matter relevant to the operation of the school district be added to the board member comment parameters?
Yes. Board members? Ms. Morgan?
Well, I'm not sure about it. The reason is that we discuss the business of the board, of the agenda. No. Board member comment for the regular meeting is to talk about, is the opportunity to talk about what the decisions the board made at the meeting. For example, if you pull an item, you can pull it for discussion and then say you're going to support it. Well, it shouldn't be pulled for discussion as part of the agenda process. It should be pulled at... It should be a follow-up at the end as board member comment. "I voted for this, but I want the public to be aware that," or "I didn't." That is the extent of the purpose of board member comment at the regular meeting. Bringing up new things for discussion really is a function of individual board members meeting with superintendent, board members bringing it to board members, asking if we can do this, have this conversation in a workshop. I don't think... The superintendent provides us with an enormous amount of information. He provides the public with an enormous amount of information. I don't think it's our responsibility at the conclusion of our meeting to educate the public about things that are being shared with us on a regular basis. I guess that's what I'm trying to say, bottom line. So I think it's the business of the board at the regular meeting. That's what gets discussed, period.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Ms. McClung?
So we need to make a decision as to whether to add that or not. So if we could have a show of consensus, yes, you would. A thumbs up means you would like to have that comment added, or I'm sorry, that verbiage added to the member comment, which says, "May address any matter relevant to the operation of the school district." If you're in agreement that that should be moved over and included under board member comment parameters, show me with your thumbs up, please.
Isn't that what public comment is?
This would be for board members.
I'm sorry?
This was the request to have that added to the board member area as well, to allow board members to bring up any item relevant to district business.
Yeah, I don't... Because I don't think that the regular board meeting is the time to do that. I think it's workshops and briefings when we ask questions.
So a quick show of thumbs so I know whether to... If there... It doesn't sound like we have a consensus, but I just want to make sure. Thank you. Okay, so that would not be added at this time?
Okay, so just... I understand that I'm okay with that, but we need to be allowing time in our workshops to have that opportunity, and that's what we're missing. So we had... We were talking about scheduling earlier. So we're not giving that time, so that is not allowing a board member to ask their questions, and they'll say, "Well, I'll reserve that for this evening," because we've ran out of time during the day. So I think we really carefully, really need to be budgeting our time and allowing for those, for that, and however that looks. I mean, I...
And thank you for that. And based on the earlier comments, you know, we do have board members who have other commitments, so we set a three- or a four-hour timeline. And, I mean, if people have other responsibilities, I, you know, I don't know how we would address that because what we're saying is that we don't have enough time to ask questions. But we have a lot of conversation, which may be repetitive and may be revisiting things that have already been discussed and shared and decided on. So I think that maybe what we need to look at is starting earlier, ending later, and then trying to accommodate board members who have other commitments, such as advisory boards and state boards, so that we can have enough time for people to ask the questions they need. But I'm going to go back to what Ms. Morgan said. I mean, we always have that opportunity to ask the superintendent. I mean, we can email him, call him anytime. You know, I usually send him an email once a week and say, "Here are my items and here are my questions." So this is what... And then I usually get my answers either in the board updates or, you know, directly. So, yes, Ms. Morgan?
So under workshop, it does say, "Board members are free to discuss amongst themselves," and it says, "New items might be brought forward." So we have... It's clear that the board members should have the opportunity then. So maybe the problem is that we're laying out a workshop agenda without allowing, let's say, 30 minutes at the end for non-agenda discussions, so that that way, we embed the time we need to have those conversations that we're not having. So that may mean less workshop topic time, but some board member time. That would be my suggestion.
We agree. I agree. Yes, Ms. Gittens?
And I just... I can't let it pass without saying something about the comment that was made, that some board members are just saying it to, you know, attract the public or whatever. I don't know if anyone realized, we had 3,000-plus people watching that meeting last week, and I think it was the most that we've ever had. The point being, there are relevant topics that the public who put us here are anxious to hear about in whatever venue. And I think it's a, you know, against our community that we are working for not to discuss relevant. But the key word in there was the word relevant. If it's something as big as what we're doing right now with reopening of schools, I believe there has to be time to discuss that in a timely manner when people are watching and people are interested in knowing. So, my comment.
No, thank you. And I think we have been doing that.
Well, I was told, no, that I won't go into it, but that's okay. We can go on for the sake of time.
Thank you. Ms. McClung?
Okay, so the next item actually talks about repetition. It says, "We have report on advisory committee meetings intended and share information about school visits or community events at both the regular meeting and the briefing meeting. Can we agree to report only once, and which meeting would we agree to report?" So let's start with, should it just be reported at one or the other?
Yes.
Okay, so moving from there. At the... Should it be at the regular action meeting or at the briefing?
I think it should be the choice of the board member.
Board members?
I'm just going to say which one we have time at, so, you know, I'm back to the time.
Yes, Ms. Morgan?
I didn't understand what Ms. Giavanelle just said, and then I do want to make a comment.
I'm sorry. I think it's just, which meeting do we have the time to do it? That's my concern. So you're addressing that earlier, I think is a good point, so, yeah.
Okay, but I guess my comment, my observation is that if members of the public are watching for certain pieces of information, then they should be told when that information will be made available. So if we're going to be talking about advisory meetings, and some people are reporting in the briefing meeting, some people are reporting in the workshop, and some people are reporting at the consent agenda, we're not getting a clear picture of the work that's being done on the board by that stuff. So all I'm trying to do is to say that if we're really trying to speak to the public, let's talk about when so that the public knows... What are you pointing at?
Your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, if we're speaking...
I'm getting old. I can't hear anybody.
I'm just saying, if we're speaking to the public on a particular topic on a regular basis, the public really is entitled to know when the board members will be speaking to that topic, I think. That's my opinion.
Yes, thank you. And I would suggest that that would be the regular meeting because that's when we have our highest viewer participation.
Was this one we used to have, like, we spent the whole day here? So we were like back-to-back meetings? Remember, because we really haven't... We kind of like changed that. So in essence, yes, it was maybe being said twice. So, yeah, I would say the action meeting because that's the... I would move to say that.
Yes, Ms. Gittens?
But is that changing? I thought in the past, we had advisory reports and updates. Are you talking about the advisory reports from the...
No.
From the chairs or just our individual reports?
Our reports from when we attend our meetings.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm hearing that it should be at one, and it sounds like most people are in agreement that those reports should take place at the action meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
We will change that.
Can we limit it? Limit the time of our comments?
I think we have that somewhere in here, but I can't see it.
Sorry, was there a question?
I was just saying, can we limit the time of our comments? Because I look out here at staff that's diligently working during the day, and when it gets to be 8 o'clock at night, they don't want to hear our comments. And I'm just trying to be fair. The purpose of an action meeting of the board is to conduct the business of the board, again, not, not interact with the public, not put things on the record, not communicate with each other about anything other than the action that took place at that meeting. And so we get away from being a professional board that's engaging in the business of the board if we're talking about things like school visits during an action meeting of the board. It's just not... It's not what an action meeting is for, but I know I'm in the minority on that, so if we could at least limit them?
So in our protocols, under regular action meetings, it says...
I know what it says.
Okay.
I know what it says, and we're talking about it, and so I'm expressing that opinion.
And part of the business of the board is to communicate with the public and report back to them about our activities. So I think... And I think there is a limit in here. I think we're supposed to do five minutes of... I think we're supposed to do five minutes apiece, which you can say a lot in five minutes.
I'm not sure that that is in there, but that's something that I can look, can double-check and bring that back at another time, if you want to look at it, to see if it's there.
Sure, I think that's great. Okay. And it is almost 3:10, so-
It is. So, I would, I would ask if board members want to continue this, or we had a break scheduled, then we had a continuation, I'm sorry, and then we had a moving on to the communications plan. So, Madam Chair, if you would ask board members, what's the preference, to continue this or to move to the communications plan? And do you still want to take a break?
Thank you. Okay, so I'll poll the board. Ms. Giavanelle, you want to continue this or move on to the communications plan?
I'm going to say, let's continue, because my concern is that we will not get back to this. So, that's what I would say.
Ms. Patrica?
What is the communication plan?
That's what I was going to, I have no idea what that is.
I don't either.
There is a request, that this is one of those items that has been on that list of workshops for quite a while, since back before the spring shutdown. And the request was to discuss, how does the board communicate with each of the different groups of stakeholders? And are there areas which could be improved? Is there a set plan?
Well, I see that as being a huge issue, especially given Ms. Gittens' comments, since she's joined the board, really. And I mean that in a good way. I'm not, that's not an accusatory thing. I think that that's a big issue. And I also was surprised at the timing of this discussion that we're having right now, because typically, we have that during reorg.
Right.
So, I think we should, we should push the rest of this off to reorg. And yes, we should take a break, please.
Can I make a comment on that? Yes, that was one of the issues with pushing things. And like Ms. Giavanelle said, we never finished our reorg. We started doing the governance team. We never completed all of that process. And that's what kind of drove me as well, to talk about making sure we don't miss stuff and not go back to it. And that was one of the things. And yes, this should have been done at reorg, but we never had it.
We actually did a review of protocol at the reorg meeting. If you recall, we did that at the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools. And a new version did come out. And there was a request to do this prior to reorg, because we felt that there were some items that people weren't particularly happy with and might like to have those in place, so that they could be reviewed once we had a, after the elections, so that there were a protocol in place of how things really were being done, rather than, some things were not necessarily being done as they were being described.
Thank you. Okay, so, Ms. Giavanelle, you want to continue this? Ms. Patrica wants to send it to reorg. Ms. Jordan?
I would be okay with moving this to a latter date, and, because I really want to hear what communications have to say. I mean, is there a problem with us doing both? I'm not sure what the-
Well, I think we have a stop for 4:00. So, we, and this is a lot. So, we either finish this, or we put it aside and probably start the communications plan. But I would make a prediction and say, it's probably going to be a big conversation, and probably could be a whole workshop.
For which one?
For the communications plan.
Okay. Because I think this is going to take much longer to complete this as well.
Okay, so you're, you want to-
I would hold off on this.
Hold off on this, okay? Ms. Gittens?
I'm moving, I'm moving forward with this, because there are things that will overlap with communication anyway on what we're talking about in our protocol.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Continue this, finish it.
Okay, Ms. Morgan?
I'm ambivalent.
I'm sorry.
I am ambivalent.
Okay.
Whatever the majority of the board wants is fine by me.
So, then, yes. Let's say that we have, and I think we should stay on this and do the communications plan another time. So, we have a consensus to stay with this and take a break right now, because, sorry for some people.
They just have to tilt it forward.
Video only, yeah.
Just ask them to tilt it.
It doesn't move. Tried that.
It did?
Yeah.
Right, and is nicer after the meeting?
You're good.
Chill.
Okay, all right, we're, it is 3:26 and we're ready to resume. We have about a half hour. And Ms. McLoughlin.
Thank you. So the next two items that were, were on the list of recommendations for discussion. The first one was to review what items should be placed on future agendas and request information from the superintendent to refu- refer to topics that are not administrative or managerial in nature.
I'm sorry, can you tell us where you're at? Which number, which page?
Eight. I'm still on page one.
Eight, okay, thank you.
Of the, of the list of, of items for discussion. So I, I think this item has actually already been discussed when you were talking about earlier about when to bring things up with superintendent and when to add things to the agenda.
Yes.
So unless someone sees another need for that, I think we can move on to the next one.
Please do.
Okay, and then the next thing was just a reminder that comments during student hearings are limited to the content of the recommendations that were on the agenda. There was not a recommendation to change that. It was just asked that people be reminded of that. The next area was workshop criteria.
Excuse me, Ms. McLoughlin?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd actually like to ask Attorney DePree Bruno for a training on not only that, but employee discipline issues that come before the board. What exactly is it that board members can and cannot consider in the decision-making process for those things? And what, what's the appropriate role of a board member? I guess more generally.
So in the employee hearing as well as in student hearings, you're acting as a quasi judicial body?
No, no, you don't have to do, do it now. Just, I'm just like asking for it in general, and if you want to do it in the form of a memo, that's fine.
Okay.
But I think that if we're, if we all have the same set of rules as we head into the next one of those, it will be better.
Okay.
Is that fair?
That's fine.
Thank you.
And, and that might be coming up in our new policies. Okay, Ms. Skittens.
And, and this, anyway, the question that I had goes along with that. In other words, if we're presented that this is what the superintendent or whoever is suggesting, at what point and when can we say, well, what if we do this? And that, that goes along with what Ms. DePree Bruno is going to do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Giavennelli.
Madam Chair, just so I can completely understand what Ms. Skittens is asking.
I can't hear you. I can't hear.
So I can understand specifically what Ms. Skittens is asking. Can you repeat what you said in terms of what point?
Basically, it, it goes along with what Ms. Patrico was saying at a hearing. If, if the recommendation that we presented with is one thing, can we say, have we considered this? Or is it just a meeting to say yea or nay? When can we discuss anything like that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So move on.
And then with that, though, we have to have accurate information. And there was, one of the hearings, we did not have accurate information. It was a mixed file. So I think that that is really important to, it's going to bring up a lot of questions. And that's how that evolved, is because we didn't have accurate information. So I think that's important.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. McLoughlin.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe the area of workshop criteria was covered already, talking about keeping a list of those workshops. However, there was also a request to review the parameters and context of the topics that would come up for workshop. So I, I'm not sure who had asked for that. If you could explain what kind of clarity you need around that, please.
What page? What, what page?
On page nine.
You're talking about the first part? Board workshop topics, page 10?
I'm sorry, it is page 10, I'm sorry. Wrong direction.
Ms. Morgan.
Yeah. So I think, I think that was mine. And I think the issue for me was, you know, board workshop topics should be about board business. And to the extent that we get involved with administration, it should be about processes that we believe are inconsistent with policies and, and law. In other words, I think sometimes we use board workshops to inform ourselves about the work of the superintendent and not to deal with, with the responsibility that we have as board members with respect to policy budget and, and oversight. So that, that's where that came from, I think.
Okay. Any comments on that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then on page 10, at the top of page 10, there is a mention of giving the superintendent 12 days. Let me get to that.
Going from 12 to seven.
Yes, right now it says, requests must be submitted by memorandum or email to the superintendent 12 days prior to the meeting at which the requested wishes, the quester wishes to have the presentation. So the request is to, the recommendation is to move the number of days from 12 to seven if you're requesting a formal presentation to the school board. And Dr. Atkins, I might ask, would that give you, your team enough time to get together a presentation if they only had seven days' notice?
It's only five business days. I assume we're talking about only five business days, right?
Yes. Ms. Patrico.
I don't, I, I thought this was when we wanted an outside presenter to come in. I thought that's what the purpose of this protocol was. I didn't think it was, we're requesting a presentation from staff. I thought this was, we've got somebody on the outside that wants to come in and tell us something.
Right.
I'm sorry, you're correct.
Right.
Madam Chair.
And, yes, Ms., Ms. Bruno.
The only thing I would be cautious of is that we do need to notice things.
Right.
So if a presenter is coming to present something that the board is going to make a decision on, that needs to be properly noticed in advance. So that's the only concern I would have with, you know, reducing the time.
Thank you.
So I have a question. The way this is written, may I?
Yes.
The way this is written, it appears as if one board member can make a request and then we all have to sit through the presentation. No?
I believe in the Office Manager Protocol or Office Manager Procedures, there are parameters, and the superintendent and the office manager work on it to see whether or not the request falls within the parameters provided on that process sheet. Am I, am I from another planet? I think that's, I think that's the way it was a while ago. I, I remember when we worked on that because we were having so many requests.
Right.
And so we said it has, we were having requests from vendors and things like that. So we did, we wrote up some sort of a process sheet for the office manager, and I think there was, if there was any issue, she was to work with the superintendent on whether or not it was an appropriate topic. So yeah, anybody, buddy could ask, but just because you asked didn't mean it would happen.
Right.
And then my last question is, Dr. Atkins, 12 days, where did that come from? Do you know? Do you remember?
I, no, I don't.
I, I think it had something to do with the notice and making the appointments and getting it on a date when there was already a scheduled briefing or...
I mean, my one comment relative to this is that I know it's, it's advertising, posting notice is a challenge already.
Right. Oh, Ms. Skittens.
Um, I'm wondering why in that first sentence it, it gives an option to present at a regular meeting or a workshop or a briefing. I'm thinking that if we, why wouldn't it be at a briefing that a board member could, you know, could request, you know, a presentation of this type rather than at any of our meetings? Does that make sense? In other words, just, you know, at a briefing, 15 minutes? And if it's something, and I, I don't agree with the fact that if a board member wants to have a presentation done, that the board votes on whether they get to do the presentation. I think that that should be a part of, you know, working with the superintendent and staff of the relevance and being able to do a presentation, a 15-minute presentation that they feel is relevant. Otherwise, you're having a board vote yea or nay on something that they really don't understand. And that's the whole purpose, is to get everybody to understand it.
Right, and, and I thought it was briefings that we entertained.
Yeah, that's why I don't understand why it states in here, meeting, briefing, or workshop.
Didn't we have the Southern Poverty Law Center come in to discuss redistricting at an action meeting? Didn't they give a presentation at an action meeting?
Actually, we did, yes.
I mean, I was thinking the same thing.
Yes. Okay, so comment, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, I, I would think we could pretty much zap regular meeting. Leave it, I would leave it at 12 days, but, you know, at a, at a regular meeting, and it's something that a board member asks to be there. I mean, we're voting.
Right.
It's a voting meeting, so, yeah, I, I think it sounds more logical to have it at a briefing or a workshop. And then if it's something we're interested in, that it could come up on an agenda for an action meeting, but...
Thank you. Board members, in agreement? That we leave it at 12 days and?
And take, take out regular meeting?
And, yes.
Okay, so leave it at 12 days and take out regular meeting. Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
All right, on to page two.
Page two? Okay.
Okay. So, Maintenance of School Board Policy. This is on page 10 of the protocol. There was a recommendation that this become a function of the board attorney or a designee, and that we look at the three-year rotation, what about annual changes to fill, such as those required in state statute changes? And then recommendation around the maintenance timeline schedule. And if that went to the board attorney as her, as the board attorney functioned, then that, that schedule would be at the board attorney's discretion. So let's start with discussion of, should this be a function of the board attorney?
Shall we ask Ms. Bruno?
I say yes. I'll say yes.
Yes. Shall we ask Ms. Bruno her thoughts? Uh-oh. I saw the eyes over the mask.
So part, some of this is already in my contract to be able to review policies. So I think it's already incorporated in what my job description is and what my contractual requirements are.
Okay.
It's really been historically what, how we've operated.
Right. So for sake of time, do we all agree with that?
Yes.
I do.
Okay.
All right, thank you. The next area for recommendations were around board development. And there was the discussion around 1.01, I'm sorry, 1.04 and 1.06 that we mentioned earlier. There was a question around, are all board members committed to board development? So let's, let's start with, do you have any questions around the requirements of 1.0, policy 1.04? That's School Board Responsibilities.
Okay.
I don't see any there.
Questions?
Any questions about 1.06, which is School Board Philosophy? All right, I don't see any questions there. And then I believe this board member was just asking for confirmation from all board members that they are committed to board development.
Is, is development defined?
I'm sorry?
I'm just saying, is development defined?
I'm looking at the piece here to see if it...
It says professional development, and it's, basically it just says professional development.
I believe it just says, they take part in team development and training with their superintendents to build shared knowledge, values, and commitments for their improvement efforts. Doesn't talk about specific training in this particular piece. And again, this is not a piece of protocol in itself. It was more of a question, does the board wish to continue with participating in development opportunities?
Yes. Well, and, and the last part that says, see FSBA website for additional training recommendations? Or other, you know, whatever. Anyway, it's...
Well, and I believe earlier today, there was that question around, are there other organizations that provide training and not specific to Florida school boards? Was the general response on that.
Well, it still could be there and just say FSBA or other additional training recommendations.
So are you recommending that we add a sentence saying other training recommendations? Providing other train, board members?
I don't even know where we are. Oh, see the FSBA website for additional training recommendations?
Mm-hmm.
At this point, I don't have additional sources to put there, but if board members have additional sources that they would like added, if you would send them. I don't see a problem with adding additional sources. It's not part of protocol, it's just areas that you could seek additional development.
Because, if I had... Yes, Ms. Bruno.
Because we have had additional training.
Yes.
By our own in-house. So I mean, it's already there for us if we need it because we make that decision on the training.
Yeah.
So I think that's already there in the, in the comments, like Jared.
Right, and then the others that we had. But the way it's written is that it's only through FSBA, so I'm just saying another.
Well, and I think they offer other, you know, the, a lot of the trainings that we go through FSBA are presented by different, like with the ethics, it's different legal teams from different...
Yeah, just recommendations.
Counties, and there's people from, for finance from different...
Right, but I'm just saying to say, and other opportunities, that's all, just adding other.
Yeah, I don't think we're limited in that, but yes, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you.
Okay, and then, Ms. Skittens, I believe this was yours, since I, if you would clarify, it says legal reference books, like the federal rules of civil procedure no longer use the word shall. The Supreme Court ruled that the word shall appears in statutes, it may, it means may of March 12th on 2020. And was that specifically...
That was with 106. Trying to see where it was in there, it's...
In 106, it says, therefore the board shall enlist the items. Is that what you were referring to?
It, it's fine, we can, we can forget it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next was to, to look at the section on use and request for information or data on page 13.
Which one is it?
13.
No, I know, but where?
Page 13, use and request of data.
Oh, okay.
So if you're not there, it, the, the general gist of it is that if you are requesting information, it needs to be requested in writing from the superintendent. And then it has that, the piece around if the time requested, the time to, to meet that request exceeds one and a half hours, then the board member would, would present the request at a board meeting or workshop. And then it would be necessary to have board approval if it took longer than one and a half hours to meet that request.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes. My question on this, this wasn't mine, but, um, the part that says, or require an expenditure of funds, because I know I had requested some information and I was given a bill to, that I had to pay for it in order to get it. So I don't know if that's a generic thing for the board and everybody, and I, I just, if it's clear.
Ms. Bruno, could you address that? Board members in their position as oversight need to pay for information.
You should be able to ask, access all documents that you need to be able to, to do your position. So I'm assuming that this was a public records request and the, a bill was submitted? Is that what it was?
I, I'm trying to remember what the data was. I had asked for something and I was given a bill for $75 that said if I wanted to receive it, I had to pay. So I just let it go.
And for, the only thing I could think of would be a public records request, but the statute is pretty clear that the board is entitled to get documents that it feels it's necessary to be able to conduct their duty and do their job.
So the statement in there, or require an expenditure of funds, is kind of vague in that, in other words, are we saying that if it requires an expenditure of funds from us, or?
I think one of the, just to be clear, though, it's the board, but the board needs to do their job. So individual board members do have to be careful when you're asking just for yourself and you're doing a project for yourself. And I think this is what this is, you know, referring to? The expenditure, if it's something, I don't know if it's for yourself or it's, you're expending more than an hour and a half of staff time. or it's, you're expending more than an hour and a half of staff time. But the board, in order to function and do its job, is entitled to records. I hope that clarifies a bit.
No, it does. In other words, though, if a board member seeks some information and the rest of the board does not agree that that board member should get that information, then they can vote them down. And you can get it if you like and pay for it. Is that how that's stated?
As a citizen, you're, you're entitled to do a public records request.
Can you repeat that, Ms. Bruno?
Citizen, you're entitled to do a public records request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Okay. Okay, then, well, it is 3:49, so let's move on.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
The next area is around orientation of new school board members. And rather than, than have this discussion around this right now, I, I would like to make a recommendation that board members who came on with the last election, if you would send recommendations of things that went well, almost like a plus delta, things that went well when you were brought on board and then things that you wish you had known, then maybe we can, I can put that together and present that at another time rather than taking time right now to discuss that.
Thank you very much. Great suggestion.
Thank you. Okay. And then a couple of these, wherever you see "Add internal auditor," I know that we need to add the internal auditor to the list of employees of the board, which means we also need to add that job description and we also need to add that evaluation process. So, those will be added.
Right. And, and to the organizational chart.
And to the org chart, yes, ma'am. There was a recommendation around the evaluation of staff reporting to board to set a time certain for completion of the evaluations to ensure their entire completion in a timely manner and include a statement regarding transparency and sharing of information with all board members in a timely manner. My recollection is that when Susan was the office manager, that she set that timeframe for people. I don't know if you, if, if the recommendation was to add that to protocol or if it was just a reminder that, that maybe that information needed to be sent out to everyone in advance and very clear what those timelines were.
Can, is it, you know, within protocol to just say, within a certain amount of time? To have some time certain in there, within two weeks or whatever? Just so that it's there?
No, I, I... Yes, Ms. Morgan?
I was just going to suggest that that's really part of the job description of the office manager.
Yes.
What the procedure is. So, the expectation is that we will get it, we will respond to it.
Right.
And according to the fashion that did she present, she presented to us.
Right. Right. Because there usually was a date due.
Right.
Here it is. And, yeah, okay. Thank you.
There was also a suggestion around a suggested frame, timeframe for replacement of vacancies.
Okay. So, I, I don't know whose that was.
It wasn't mine, but I, I think that's kind of difficult because we, unless we know what's going on at HR, it's hard for us to say, "You have two weeks to fill this one position." But I, I think that's not, I don't know. I, I didn't write this.
Right.
But don't we hear from, if we have a position, HR usually informs us as to, here's the process and, and then we can say yea or nay or move that up or don't. And it's an individual circumstance.
Yes. So, was that yours, Ms. Gittens?
No.
Oh, okay.
At least I don't think so.
So, it sounds like there, the process, as I understand it, is you let HR know, they advertise, there's a certain time limit for them, for applications to be received. You review the applications and then go through the, the process of vetting those and then interviewing. Is that correct?
Right.
So, everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to move on then. Thank you. Again, the next topic is budgets. And again, this may be another discussion. It was a discussion of the budget for the board. And then, there was also a comment that the quarterly expense reports have not been provided. And that, that is something I know is available through the board office manager. I don't know if she had worked out a process to share those. Apparently not. Okay.
Am I, can I ask, am I just forgetting something? I don't remember ever seeing the quarterly board budgets. As a matter of fact, we didn't, I guess we had some input into it, but I never did see the final budget that was submitted in the overall budget piece.
Right. I, I don't, I, I think if you asked, you know, you couldn't see it.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we ask, yeah, but...
I don't think we received that.
I've never, I don't remember ever receiving it in almost two years. So, this might be an asterisk next to it or something that we can remember for the next board manager that, you know, because we did discuss, how can we do our thing in, in cutting back? And I don't ever remember some of that. We did the resolution to that discussion.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think there was a whole lot that we could eliminate, but we did.
Well, I think we said, "We don't all need to go to everything."
Right. We did that, yes.
And a couple.
And then this year, we did not re...
They're little things, but it's just kind of...
Right. And we did not rejoin the consortium this year.
Modeling, modeling type tightening the belt like everybody else did.
So, that particular process may be something that when a new office manager is hired or if Ms., Ms. Thomas takes over that, that particular duty, then maybe that needs to be built into, that, that process needs to be built into those duties. It's a very, very simple...
Right.
Report to run, so, yeah. Everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Jivinelli?
Well, and this was one I, I think was on our list I had asked to talk about. Because I, I thought that we, since we, we could have budget crunches, that we would, you know, talk about our individual budget, like how many events we want to go to and, you know, and limit that to a certain amount. Not necessarily events, but once we spent our, our budget in amount, you know? And, and that was just a conversation that I thought we should have at some point. That was on the list.
Okay.
I don't know if we still want to have that conversation. That's up to this board, but...
Didn't, didn't we have that? Didn't, I think we did.
It was with, no, Dr. Carlin. They inter, separately, we had conversations with, I think it was Denise and somebody, Cindy may have been there. Thank you, I'm sorry. It was so long ago, I can't remember.
Just getting used to her.
It was just, you know...
But it was discussed again.
It was a conver, I only had one conversation with, about that.
And that's when I said, "Well, maybe we should, you know, limit it, you know, each limit." Instead of saying, "I'm going to go to this and you're going to go to that." And, you know, and, and just limit it to an amount of expense money. I mean, and that would be, we would work within our budget, you know? It can be very, you know, the budget could be large, a lot of events. Although I think there, there's few and far between this. We've just saved a lot of money.
We're saving money.
I know, it was brought, because I brought it up at one point and put forth the suggestion that each board member have X number of dollars. And then, if we want to go past that, then we would pay for a ticket on our own.
Exactly. That conversation happened over the summer, I believe.
There was no resolution.
Correct. There wasn't a resolution. And I said, "Well, maybe we should have a, a workshop on or talk about it." But I think we need to see what the budget has been and we could probably then kind of work from that, you know? I don't know. I mean, I think it's, it's worth a conversation.
So, Chair Fisher, could we, as a board, request that we, that we get that? Since it seems like several of us are interested in seeing it, that we just put in a board request? Could we please see?
To review our, our own budget?
Yeah. Can we review what was, I mean, it, that's already been put forward.
Okay.
I don't know what was put forward.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, Mrs. Patrica has to leave. And she's concerned because there are items on this list that she would like to have input on. And we still have...
Can I request?
Well, I just wanted to finish with Ms. Patrica first. So, shall we conclude this now, since it is 4 o'clock? And then, look forward to finishing it at another time?
Whatever's the pleasure of the board.
Yes, Ms., Ms. Gittens?
I, I believe that next one, that 120 with the Audit Committee, is very, very important. Is there any possibility we could take just a few minutes to do that one? And then, you know, push the rest on? Because I'm sure Ms. Patrica wants, would...
It's a policy change, though. We can't actuate a policy change at this table.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is it possible, because this is going to be something that's going to be brought up during the RSM discussion in September? Is it, I think it probably fits best to discuss it at that time. And that will also allow me to do a little bit more research with regards to other districts and how they're handling that to be able to fully vet it for the board.
Thank you.
In that case, then I would motion that we go ahead and conclude and continue this later. Do we need a motion or whatever?
No, I don't think we need a motion. I think we just need a consensus. Dr. Atkins had a comment.
Just that we have a meeting at 4 o'clock or a call from the state about safe reopening for teachers. And I'd love it there.
Okay. So, at this time, we will hold the rest of this agenda and complete this at a time to be announced. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.